From Monday, May 23rd, under item one called Order 1.1, Welcome and Roll Call.
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber. Mock. Cavani.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Veen.
Here.
We have a corps.
Great. Under item two, Discussion Items 2.0 Narcotics Task Force Grant Application, High Density Drug Area. I assume this is a simply a budget amendment to receive the funds. Does anyone have any questions related to that grant application?
Move or rule.
Moved by Weigel, second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.1, Special Events, Rambus Brewery, Red River, 20-Year Class Reunion. Hi, Ms. Simeoni. Good evening.
Good evening, President, Sandy, members of the committee. This is an event that we would see pre-COVID quite a bit. It's a situation where they have, they need overflow room for this event, and they'll put up a tent in front of their business. And that's it. It's a 21-year age or older.
Twenty-one in over event for a 20-year reunion to allow them to sell and serve alcohol in an area designated outside of their property. Any concerns, issues? Mr. Veen moves approval? Second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.2, Application for a Taxicab License from Gray's Taxi. Good evening, Ms. Stern.
Hi. Gray's Taxi has applied for a Taxicab license. The application is attached, and it has been reviewed by the Police Department. And the owner, Aaron Galbert, I believe, is on with us virtually if you have any questions.
Any comments? The application is reviewed by the City Attorney's Office. Is that correct?
The Police Department.
No, the Police Department reviews. Thank you. Sorry, not the City Attorney. The Police Department reviews it. And so, Mr. Weigel moves approval. Is there a second by Dockler? Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Stern, item 2.3, Reappointments to the Civil Service Commission. It's the reappointment of Ms. I don't know if that's Nyes or Nice. Nyes? Reappointment of Mr. Burlog and reappointment of Keith Reitmeyer. Any comments or questions? Mr. Weber has joined us at 5:36. Moved by Mock, second by Dockler. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.4, Memorial Village Development Agreement. Mr. Feeling.
Hey, Council President, Sandy, members of the committee, the whole. Thanks for having us today. This is our, as you recall during the pandemic and just before the pandemic, that we have several mixed-use developments. And I'll just kind of go over those. And all of them are underway. Beacon by Epic is underway. Lyons are now called Franklin on Fourth, near Grand Forks City Hall. That's planned to be started in earnest, probably in the June-July timeframe, with serious construction this fall. So it's good that we're moving forward with that. And in the Block Five is moved forward also. This week, Thursday, you have the Olive Ann Boutique Hotel groundbreaking at 5 o'clock. So if anyone's interested, you can show up there. So all of those are in the downtown area. So a lot of success. Not only we had hoped for, we approved the pilots or the Tiff financing in the various circumstances. More importantly, not only do we approve it, the projects are moving forward. And that's really important. The final project was Memorial Village, and as you recall, that really fit into our unique town-gown relationship as we move forward with, in this case, it was a P3 project between private developers, the University of North Dakota, and then all the various local governments through a pilot of 20 years at 90% tax exemption. So that was really the unique part of it today. You know, succeeding me today in the next agenda, I will be some more research projects. So we're really doing a lot of great things with the University of North Dakota. As we move forward, it's exciting to know that the University of North Dakota is going to move forward with Memorial Village project. We are also working with the University of North Dakota on various other things in and around this area and related to infrastructure. So there's some stormwater improvements that would be good to be made around this specific area. And as you probably know, we did make some Columbia Road improvements last construction season. We are intending to finish off that University Avenue corridor reconstruction. That would go from basically Columbia Road to the University Avenue Park. We have not done that. One of the reasons why we have not moved forward with that project is we've been waiting to see what happens as part of the redevelopment in and around where that service parking lot is being developed. And today, you're going to see some master plan that's going on. So we're going to try to integrate not only our underground infrastructure, but some of our surface infrastructure to kind of further our partnership along with the University of North Dakota. So, Mr. Weber, you've always been a huge proponent of creating these nodes, you know, the node downtown with mixed-use developments, with University of North Dakota included, and then all of our partnerships with the University of North Dakota in and around campus with public-private partnerships. So it's really exciting. We made it through the pandemic, and all those developments and investments are continuing on in various aspects. So today, before we get into the development agreement per se, some things have changed on the project, and also some things have changed with the University of North Dakota and what their master plan is. So I've asked Mr. Mike Peeper, who's the Associate VP of Facilities, to come here and give us an updated presentation. And also, Mr. Bierin is here on behalf of the private developer on part of Memorial Village. And I think they're going to be involved in some other aspects in and around this area. So I've asked him to give an update on that. And then after that, Mr. Augustin will be here. Just going to go all the outlines of what the developments agreements you have already approved. This is the last one. And hopefully, we see construction here start soon on this particular one. So with that, I'd ask Mr. Peeper and Mr. Bierin to come up and give you an overview.
Good evening, Mr. Peeper, Ms. Bierin. Thanks for being here.
Just clicked. I just have two quick slides I wanted to share with the council. Is with new leadership at UND, we are in an active strategic planning phase. So we're doing some microplanning for some of the colleges, but we probably won't do a large engaged update to our master plan until the strategic plan is completed. I'm assuming that the strategic plan will take all of the academic year to kind of work through and approve. So we're working off of some plans that we had in place. The two major objectives that we're looking at at the university is enhancing our quality of our space and two, improving our space utilization. There was a number of buildings built over the last decade to replace some existing buildings on campus. So now we're kind of getting around to cleaning up those facilities. In doing so, we're opening up some highly valuable property for mixed-use development. Our wish is really to do kind of common ground leases and let the private developers come in and build out those sites. So this map here kind of shows a number of buildings in green that we're managing and maintaining. The yellow, we're kind of managing towards a replacement. And the red is what we've already taken down. The map on the left there is an intensity map. We looked at how students, faculty, staff travel, both walking and traveling. And you can see that from a heat map standpoint, our core campus, the Cool English, Cooley to Columbia University to the tracks, are a high-density kind of walkable neighborhood area. So that's where we're really looking to put all our academic programming, except of course, for aerospace to the rest and allied health to the north. So this project is really focusing on getting our last of our athletic improvements. About 20 years ago, we started to transition athletics, moving into Division One, upgrading. So we built the Ralph, the Betty. We built the High Performance Center for student recreation. We built the Wellness Center. So all these things were removed from the HSLAP Sports Center. A few years ago, we dropped swimming. So our use of the HSLAP now has really come to just providing some swim lessons. So we're coordinating with the school district and Park and Rec and the city on kind of long-term plans for the pool. But the Memorial Village that is going to get discussed tonight is half of what we need to move our athletics east of Columbia. We're just wrapping up fundraising on the Pollard Edition. That'll put what we call the sweaty spaces connected to the high-performance space. So your workout spaces, your weight rooms, your locker rooms and the such. In the Memorial Village, we'll be building, the ground floor will be for athletics. Upper floors will be for private housing. And that'll be our non-sweaty space or athletic administration, coaches' office, meeting rooms, where they bring recruits and their families and those types of activities. And so what we've done is the Memorial Stadium and the Memorial Stadium parking lot are both gifted to the university through the fellows, which has now become the university foundation. We're putting both those parcels back in the hands of the foundation so they can enter into private mixed use. And Memorial Village on the side of the old stadium will be our first, our first of two projects on that site. Just stepping back on the west side of Columbia, we're just wrapping up, well, we're just starting actually, finishing the design phase on what we'll call the Maryfield Twomey. That helps us get out of Columbia Hall, turns the Columbia Hall side into a future project. So we're switching speeds on our planning now, and we're really starting to focus in on our science education and our engineering. And so we're targeting that HSLAP site to give us the space we need for engineering. Engineering's had a 60% enrollment growth over the last 10 years on campus and online, 40% growth in research last year. So we need some newer upgraded space for engineering. And then with our science education, we're looking to build new, I'd call it, wet labs, science labs, skyray into Abbott, use Abbott more for general classrooms, offices, meeting-type spaces. So we don't have to go through the difficulty of retrofitting that building for modern day. So this helps us get to the HSLAP site to make that, called STEM, development that we need and kick off the Memorial Village and Pollard Center Edition this summer. So with that, I'll pause. And if there's any
questions for me, and then Steve can serve my job. Any questions for Mr. Peeper? Mr. Bierin, good evening.
President, Sandy, members of the committee. My name is Steve Bierin. I'm here representing Memorial Village LLC this evening. And Todd just asked me to provide a little bit more background on the project that should hopefully be recommended approval tonight. Mr. Peeper did a good job of outlining the basic project in terms of the first-floor condominium that we will be setting aside for the University of North Dakota Athletic Department. And then there's actually a partial second floor as well. It will house the coaches' offices and the film room and the meeting rooms and things for the football program. In addition, the next four floors of the building, floors two through five, will be residential market rate apartments. Prior to the epidemic, we were mostly looking at four-bedroom, two-plus-twos. But as we surveyed the youths after the, or young adults after the pandemic, there's kind of a disdain for those four-bedroom units. Aaron, we're on the side of one or two-bedroom units. And so we've shifted that quite a bit. So we'll have 99 residential units and 204 beds that we're looking at in the next two through five floors. And then we will have underground parking underneath the building when we're putting the foundation in anyway. It was pretty cost-effective to add that. Todd had written a staff report, and I just reviewed that this morning. And I just wanted to provide a little bit of an update that he acknowledged that the total project cost was $31 million. With the crazy inflation that we've had in the last year, that's actually a $40 million project instead of a $31 million project, just for perspective. And then with the interest rate increases, we have caught, lost about 65 basis points that we have to add to our loan as well. And so if we had a compelling story previously, I think the story is maybe getting a bit more compelling as things move on. And some of that had to do with UND wanting to make sure that they could make that full movement out of the HSLAP so that this project would then come in and provide the cost-effectiveness that they needed. The other aspects I wanted to do then was just to show you some perspectives on the project, and these are hot off the press within the last 30 days. This is looking at the site from the southwest, looking northeast. This will be the new gateway to, or the new entrance to UND Athletics. And so when you walk in, there's going to be a memorial to Memorial Stadium within that. And then that whole first floor that you see there will be the UND Athletic Department with the apartments above. This is viewing the project from the northeast, looking toward the south, or northwest, looking to the southeast. And you can see this is one addition. And we talked about the sweaty part of it and the non-sweaty part of it. As they looked at rightsizing the FitzPollard Edition Two, they decided that they were going to move the coaches' offices and the film room and the meeting rooms to this facility as well. So what you see in the center of the drawing here is the new football aspect of the project, and that will probably be part of the UND condominium. The overpass there is not part of the project at this time, but it is something that's envisioned in the future. But the Hawkway is a part of that. And so if you see the old wall that was there for Memorial Village, that will be salvaged. And then we're going to put a grass wall about 10 feet from that with a roof and full heating and that type of thing. And so when you walk through, one side of it will have different UND memorial-type pictures. And then the grass will look out on both the FitzPollard Edition and the outdoor track and field, as well as the backside of this building. This is just a blow up of that to show that it's really going to be a top-class facility when you come over Columbia Road and look to the east. This is looking at it from the southeast to the northwest. This would be the backside of the facility. You can see how this would marry up at the outdoor track. And then you can see the beginning of the Hawkway way up in the upper right of the picture. And then you can see the underground parking will be placed in my old shot put ring as you drive into the facility. This is just a little different perspective than on the back of the facility. And with that, that's the information I was hoping to present tonight. Thank you for your consideration.
Any questions for Ms. Bierin? Yeah, Mr. Veen. Sorry. Mr. Bierin, is there going to be spectator stands around the track?
So you can see that there's a little bit of that in the middle, but at this point in time, there haven't been significant plans for that. And I know you asked me that in the future, and so, or in the past. So that's something we'll have to bring up. We were able to get that into the indoor facilities, and it's been awfully nice. So we'll have to see where that fits in.
And it could be either on the east side or the west side, I guess. But right now, it didn't look like any of them are planned.
Right, just very limited as you look at kind of this deck that you have on the backside of the building.
Yeah, we have modular movable stands we use for like soccer and stuff. So we would imagine using those in certain areas of the track and field.
And one other question, Mr. Peeper. That strategic plan that you showed had a lot of changes on the campus. Is this like a 10-year plan, a 20-year plan? How soon do you think some of those other changes might take place?
Well, so the two big threads that we were working towards was moving out of Columbia Hall and then moving out of HSLAP. The moving out of Columbia Hall got expedited with some of the federal dollars that flowed through the states. We received $50 million to do a complete restoration, remodel of Maryfield. That'll allow us to move arts and science back onto the campus core. We're doing some fundraising to match some of those dollars to complete the remodel of Twomey. So that'll be heavier academic, get out of Columbia. That got expedited because of the $50 million. So now the focus is really on HSLAP. This is the first step. We submitted to the state as our number one priority, the science education and engineering. And so that'll be our focus. You know, my goal this session was really to bring HSLAP down and finish the design so that it could be bid out and a schedule could be made to bring to the session in 2025. So I kind of had it more as a five-year plan, but we'll see how things work this month, this session.
Did you see the on-campus student population remaining constant? Or how is that going to work long-term?
So when we looked at our housing portfolio, we had over 5,000 beds. We were serving under 3,000. So the private sector came in. They built what the students wanted. They moved off campus. We've really focused our attention on underclassmen housing. So what you see happening in and around the Wilkerson complex, it's about $130 million investment. That'll allow us to get all underclassmen connected above ground to Wilkerson, which had a 20-plus-million-dollar overhaul maybe eight, nine years ago. So now we're really focusing on upperclassmen. We know there's a number of upperclassmen that would prefer to live on campus. The stock and availability isn't there. So we really don't want to step in and meet that demand. We'd better do these types of ground leases, put some of the property back on the tax roll, and let the market rate apartments kind of fill that void. So I don't, I mean, underclassmen is holding very steady, which is a good thing in this region. So I think that our P3 will be successful. But at this point in time, we don't have anything in the works for upperclassmen.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Weber?
Yeah, if I may. First of all, would this ever be open to the general public or at least to the general student population for certain hours?
The track and field?
Yeah.
You know, I imagine the track and field currently, it's open for, you know, student recreation. They do some flag football and those types of things. I see camps on it. I don't see it changing after it gets revamped.
And, you know, you're here to talk about UND and a specific project on campus. But one of the results of all of this work is the loss of an important swimming pool for the community. And it's maybe not fair to ask you this, but are there any talks about how the community will replace that?
Yeah, we've been working with the city and Park and Rec, K-12, the Wahoos. You know, there's roughly about five pools in the proximity of Grand Forks, and most of them are kind of at the age where they're beginning to fail. So I think the conversation is how best could we serve the community, maybe with one pool, one location. Park and Rec did do RFP, and they're actively doing some financial modeling of what a pool might mean to the community. So it's happening. We stay engaged. We had a kind of a three-year window. So we're just coming to the end of our first year, where we would keep it open for three years. But depending on how that development goes, there's some negotiation there to bridge the gap.
Yeah, Vice President Peeper, it wasn't really even fair of me to ask that question, but I appreciate you responding. It's an important part of our community's future. Thanks. This is a fantastically exciting project. Todd, you mentioned that we've been talking about this for a while. 10 years ago, we were talking about the university corridor and how the city could interface with this. It's not exactly the way we had been envisioning it then. It seems even better than what we were envisioning at that time. It's much grander. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So Todd, the staff report says approve a Memorial Village Development Agreement, but there's no development agreement attached to this document.
There is that. Mr. Augustin has been, well, he's been busy with a lot of other things, but he's, he has attached a framework of what we have approved in the development agreement. So I would ask Mr. Augustin, we do have two weeks. Obviously, we have a fifth Monday in here. And so I'd ask Mr. Augustin to go through that framework that you've seen before. And I'm sure he'll be working on that leading up to.
Rather than going through it, I assume it's going to be similar to the other development agreements we've done, correct? It's going to look very similar to the Lyons Development Agreement, which is virtually the same type of projects. So you'd like to bring it to the next council meeting?
Yep.
I see no reason why we wouldn't do that unless people have objections. Is there a motion to have the city attorney do that? Weigel moves. Is there a second by Dockler? Great. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Very good. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for sparing us that, Mr. Augustin. Item 2.5, Grand Forks Water Treatment Plant Concentrate Line Scaling, Potential Plugging, and Methods of Prevention. Study Phase Two. Ms. Parvy, good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, I have with me Ali Ashami with UND Chemical Engineering Department, as well as Jordan Grasser with A2S. Jordan has worked on the water plant with us for, through the design and construction of the project. Always been involved in a number of studies, but most recently, the RO concentrate line scaling project that he and students finished up last year. I did include that final report and wouldn't do a service of the study to give you a summary of that. But we did learn enough through that process to look at a next phase and what that would include. In particular, looking really at the antiscalent that we use through the current water treatment process, as well as the chemical cleaning, and how we could be most effective as we continue looking at the details of that throughout this study and seeing where we can mitigate that line scaling and potential plugging. We do have some membranes now that are currently being replaced. And so they will go back to Suez, the company that provides those. But Ali and his team will also look at one of those, as well as what's going on within that and how we can best mitigate that occurring. Overall, hoping to save the city some, or city financially over time, which is, this project is, you know, a bit more expensive than some of the research projects we've done with the university. But we are, we're positive that we can save some, save financially over time through operations and maintenance with the information that we receive from them. But they are both here this evening to answer any detailed questions you may have.
Any questions from Ms. Parvy? Do we, we don't have to put something like this out for RFP?
I'm not sure that, I guess I'm not sure that we could potentially put on an RFP for this. It's been something in the past that we've worked with the university in identifying areas of research. There's a number of items that we've identified and kind of worked closely with the department on. These are areas that we want to continue to research and study. If we need to do an RFP, we could. I'm just not sure that we would accomplish anything through that.
Mr. Weber?
Who would bid on it?
I don't know.
Yeah.
That's a great question. I have no idea.
There's not another university in town?
Nope, that is true.
I'll move approval.
So a motion by Weber. Is there a second? A second by Veen. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Good luck with the research. Item 2.6, Project A483 Waste Water Treatment Facility Improvements. Construction Manager at Risk Procurement Update Phase One, Pre-Construction Phase Services Parts A through D. Mr. Feeling.
Counsel, President, Sandy, members of the committee hall. Tonight, we're asking to move forward the next step with Construction Manager at Risk regarding the wastewater treatment plant. You authorized us to move forward with this delivery method back in March, earlier this spring. And what we're having in front of you this evening is that as part of the state statute, you need to finalize a selection committee. And number two, you need to authorize us to start advertising it per the state statute. The selection committee is made up of administrative individuals from the governing body. Right now, that's myself as a city administrator. The two backup people are Ms. Parvy and Ms. Botman from the Water Works Department. Also, a registered architect, and we have Dennis Trupke, who's an architect with Black and Beach. And we're trying to hire an architect that wouldn't perhaps be part of a C-Mark team. So whether it's a local architect or not, we try to get somebody that's already on our team that would not be part of a potential team. Number three is Wayne Gusevsky, who is a senior project manager for A2S. So he'd be the third. And then finally, we've, we have Mr. Adam Sinks, and he's a, he works with the mechanical contractor, One Seth Plumbing and Heating. And he's worked on several C-Mark projects, mainly with the University of North Dakota. So we've asked him because we need a contractor on there. And so we're trying to find, again, a local contractor that will not be on a construction manager team. So that's what we have in front of you. We have attached the advertisement itself. And as you recall, we already are bidding. We have attached the advertisement itself, and as you recall, we already are bidding the Phase One improvements, so the Phase One were the first-in improvements, and so hopefully we get some good bids on those, but that was estimated at 13.7, and that's all the miscellaneous improvements that we're going to make at the facility to include a backup generator that can serve the whole facility. That was, we're going to design, bid, build that one. What we're asking for as part of the C-Mar process is Phase Two and Four, and it's really taking, we have four reactor tanks, and that's really, we're going to have to take one offline while we keep the facility going, so this is really going to really, the C-Mar process is going to fit in better on Phases Two and Four, just because it's going to really require a lot of adaptation and more creative thinking in how we're going to bid it and move forward with construction with keeping the wastewater treatment plant still operational. So it doesn't really lend itself to a design bid build. It really lends to a construction manager at risk process. The other thing we have, we know we have some challenges with in the bidding environment right now in attracting bidders to our projects, similar to when we did this with the Grand Forks Regional Water Treatment Plant. We went with a C-Mar process, and I think, again, this will provide us more opportunities to get more competitive bids, to get more interested contractors engaged in this, because we can break up the bidding packages as opposed to one large bidding package. So with all those reasons, the other thing is to move forward with advertising, what we would do, we would select a firm, we would come back and ask for an agreement just to move forward as part of the construction estimating, and so they would join the city team along with the design engineer, who is A2S and Black and Beach, and they would help with some of the construction estimating as part of the project. As we move down the process, and we want to go to Phase Two, which would be bidding the project, you would have another bite at the apple to say we want to move forward with a construction manager at risk to move forward with the actual construction part of that, too. Similar to what we did with the Grand Forks Regional Water Treatment Plant, there's a range of options, but we got to start. I think we are on the timeline that we told you back in March that we would select a firm to help us with some of the pre-construction stuff in this July-August timeframe, and then start working on some things, I would say, later this year, early next. We're going to have some decisions to make about moving forward with the bidding of the construction part of this and how we want to move forward. So as we've talked about with, you know, the FUFON development agreement, there's lots of things that we've got to do along the way, and this is one, and as we kept emphasizing of that, you know, $90 to $100 million that we were looking to build to help support the FUFON project, in this case, 40 to 60 of it related to the wastewater treatment plant, most of which we were going to do anyway as part of the renewal and expansion of that facility, and so this is that first-in that we discussed previously. So with that, I'd ask for that approval, Council President, City, Members of the Committee and all.
Questions, Mr. Vee?
Yeah, but this would be a qualification-based selection, right?
It would be.
And so you'll come back, define the scope, and negotiate a contract, and both of those would come back, I would assume.
It would. I would hope to bring back the most qualified firm, then also with a, with a pre-construction agreement, also with that same, very same firm here in the next, we'll say in the next, within the next 60 days, hopefully.
Yeah, so you'd have pre-construction services and then construction phase service, they'd be two different contracts as you would go forward, right?
There would be. Yep. We'd only come back, I'd only come back with the firm and the pre-construction services agreement.
And they'd be doing cost estimates along the design and then working with the designer, we'll say, if this is managing costs?
It would be all about managing costs and also helping with the design, so you want to make sure that it's as constructible as possible. This is a little more challenging because we've got to keep a facility running while we take operations, some of the capital offline, so it's not going to be your average kind of construction project.
Any other questions, Mr. Vee? I move approval, I'll ask those other questions. Mr. Vee moves approval, is there a second?
I'll second it. I have a question. We would anticipate that there could be local contractors who could be part of this project. Do we have any firms that are capable of being a C-Mar for a project like this?
Counsel, President, City, and Councilmember, Councilmember Weber, I think we do. If you look at the Grand Forks Regional Water Treatment Plant, that was a large project and ended up being probably $100-plus million in construction, overall 150. We had partnerships in general, so we, generally what happens, we may get a large national firm that will partner with somebody local, a local regional firm, and in that case, our top two firms, the top firm that was ready to move forward with the project was Construction Engineers, which is a local Grand Forks firm, was tied with Alman Shudi, which is a more of a national construction firm. The second-best firm was PCL, which is a national or North American firm. They were tied with community contractors in that case, so in this vein, I think we'll probably get a, we may get a combination, and it may be somebody related to Grand Forks, it might be somebody related to Fargo or Minneapolis or someone like that. I think the other important part is if we do move forward with the C-Mar process as part of the construct, actual construction, as you recall, when we built the water treatment plant, that was broken into 50-plus bidding packages, and so that was a way to break it down to more bite-size opportunities, and it also allowed local and regional contractors to bid on, be more competitive and be part of the project where they may not have, if you, we would have bid the water treatment plant in one big bid, you would have largely gotten a large regional or even a national firm come in here, and you don't know who you're going to get. This is a way for us to have some more control, look at better designs, and engage our local contractors as part of the construction.
Your answer anticipated the spirit of my question in much better ways than I had asked it. Thanks. I'm ready to vote.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.7, authorize staff to submit a grant application for public transit. Mr. Bergman and City's Area Transit wants to put in another grant app. Move by Wagel, is there a second by Dockler? Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn by Wagel, second by Dockler? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're adjourned.